We'll leave this in the pledge.
Yes, sir.
Let's pray. Father Lord, as we come together this morning, Lord, just giving you thanks and praise, Lord, for what you do for each one of us individually, Lord, daily. Father, we just thank you for the place we live here in Madison County, Lord. You continue to give us a vision and guidance, Lord, to be able to make this always a good and better place to live. Father, we thank you for that. But Father, most of all, we just thank you for being our slave.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Mr. Chancellor Clerk.
Yes, Mr. President. You should have before you the May seventeenth and the June second, twenty twenty-one board minutes. I would ask if there are no changes, the board please approve said minutes.
Can we get a motion?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Let's have it.
This doesn't work.
Okay. Next. Who we have next?
Mr. President, on the agenda, we have residents from the Holiday Road area. First, we have Helen Holiday, then Emma Williamson and Thelma Rogers.
Okay. Who we have first?
Ms. Helen Holiday.
Okay.
Want to do a timer?
Yes. And you want to go ahead and bring the other two up, they can be standing here.
Good morning, Chair, Board members and others. I'm Helen Holiday at two seventy-five Holiday Road, Camden, three nine zero four five. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to come before you today. Our roads are in desperate need of pavement, not being able to get proper service from waste management due to muddy roads. Just last week, they was unable to come into Holiday Road because the roads were muddy. It happened from time to time. My daughter and nephew developed asthma due to the dusty roads. They struggles. Each time they come up to visit, they struggle, they get sick. They're sick when they go home. It's a hazard to all of us. And it is, it's been going on too long to have to live like this. It's much too long. We have buses coming in, picking up the children, and there's more children moving in. And it's an embarrassment to them, they say so, for their, you know, go to school with their shoes all muddy and stuff. It's embarrassing to the kids. And we have mail delivery, gas delivery, family members and others coming in, heavy traffic. And it can, can be hazard, hard to come in and out behind some of those vehicles. And we know they have to come in, and it's hard going in and out. But we thank you all for the work you do for us. We are pleading with you, Board members. Please pave our road immediately. We most certainly shouldn't have to live like this in twenty twenty-one. We shouldn't.
Okay. Next.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Emma Williamson. Mr. President, I'm here for the same reason as Ms. Holiday is. I've been there a year now. My husband is originally from there. He was there all his life, minus a few years when he left and went to the Midwest. But we have problems with roads, they need to be paved, they have holes in them. I even had problems with getting a bus out there to pick up my special need foster child. I had to take him to Old Town Middle School for three weeks. Go get taken and go back, one hour's drive each way, because we couldn't get a bus out there because of the roads. We have major problem. I'm an asthmatic. My husband has some breathing problems because of those dirty roads, as my niece called them, the dirty roads, the gravel roads. I had to learn to drive on one, on them, after, when I moved down there because I'd never lived on, since I was nine years old, I never lived on a gravel road. So I had to learn to drive, and the buses coming, we have people wanting to come out there now. But they, the roads are horrible. And with my special need child, he just had surgery on his leg last week, last Tuesday morning, major surgery. And we getting in and out, we, as you all know, I've been here before, we have problems with just getting a bus up there. And the bus is coming, and like Ms. Holiday said, we didn't, our waste management, for two weeks straight there, we got no garbage pickup. I was at the hospital last week, I wasn't aware of the garbage not being picked up last week. So I, we just want to bring that to you all's attention because we do need those roads fixed for the children's sake and the adults, because there are senior citizens living on that road and children going to school. And I mean, you pay for your ride, you get your bump rocking free. Thank you.
Good morning, Board members and everybody that's here. We thank you for this opportunity, once again, to be here, to come before you, to ask you for payment. I live on, my name Thelma Rogers, I live on two seventy-eight Williamson Road. And Williamson Road and Holiday Road like running to each other like this. Williamson Road is the main road going all the way in. So all of them is, is in need of being repaired. I left home in nineteen sixty-nine because I wanted to get out of the country, and I stayed gone until nineteen eighty-nine. And I found out that going to the city, I'd rather been at home with my parents. So I came back home in eighty-nine. And Adam put in several requests, I put in before, when the other supervisor was in, Mr. McCullough, when he was in, I, we asked him, but they said, they ain't gonna pave no roads up there. But I just want to say, if it's, just like it took us a long time to get our water up there in that area, when, when I came to the supervisory meeting for that, they said they thought everybody had running water. But we just got our water within the last probably fifteen, twenty years, might not been that long. So that came to pass. So we asking this time that you all find, if you can, find a way in your budget to give us, we live up in the northern part of Madison County. And when I drive around a lot of different places in Madison County, I see a lot of roads, some shorter than ours, some not in better shape or so, but they got, they end up getting their road blacktopped. And I calls down there to the road department constantly, bothering Ms. Shirley, and asking her, is we on the agenda for this year, are we on the agenda? She said, I don't know. She said, we can't get you no payment, we gonna get you, get you fixed up so you won't come to town muddy and dusty. So, you know, they do that, but when by the bus coming in, where I live at, they fix that place right next door to my mother's house, is two seventy-five Williamson Road for the bus to turn around up there. But in the meantime, it's a sewer from where the last children stay at to coming down that hill. And that sewer, it keep big hole there. Two times I done had to have the flap up under my car repaired. I'm not asking y'all to fix that, I'm just saying, if, if it was paved, I probably wouldn't have that problem. When you, when you go, when a bus come and they tracks is hitting a certain place every day, it's gonna make holes in the road. So you got a hole on this side and a hole on that side. I just had it fixed not too long ago, now it's hanging down again. So I don't know if that's on the place that I remember going over. And I try my best to go out, in and out, real, real slow, but when you hit them rocks, you can hear a screw. And so you know when you hit the rock like that, that something gonna happen eventually on your car. So most men probably relate to what I'm talking about, about that little flap up under there. I don't know how to fix it, so I had to take somebody, let them just put a screw in it or something and lift it back up. And I also, in the last five or six years, got some, something going on with my lungs, it's a breathing problem. But they haven't put me on no medication yet, and, and the man, one of the main thing, he stressed to me, but I told him I stay in the country, he said, do not be around a lot of dust. He said, cause dust is the cause of your breathing problem. So I said, I do, you know, when I go out, I keep my windows closed up, and sometime the dust get in your cars anyway, when it get in your car. And if I be around a lot of dust, my voice change, and you can't hardly hear what I'm saying, the same way if I be around smoke, my voice change. So we just asking, you know, in, in the day and time, like when I graduated high school in sixty-nine, that was understandable, but time done changed, everything have grown, and we want to grow with everybody else, and we want our community to grow too. The people's moving back up there, and we want to, let the young people there, as they move back, because they've been used to staying in town, we don't want them to get discouraged before they get back up there. We want them to come back and build up our areas where we grew up at, and we just thank y'all for your time.
Okay.
All right. Thanks ladies for coming. What you said, I totally agree with all what they're saying. Probably about twelve years ago, Madison County did a big DBST process on dirt roads. And the road that they're talking about, Williamson, Harper and Holiday, was not done at that time. DBST, for the people that don't know, is tar, rocks, tar, rocks. Really just gives you a little small hard surface. And what that do is, is take care of exactly what the old lady's talking about. I have a breathing problem. I know what the dust do to a person that have breathing problem. So that's the reason ten or twelve years ago, we did that major DBST project in the north part of the county. So what I'm gonna ask the board is, I find the road manager and the engineer to bring us estimate price on DBST, Williamson Road, Harper Road and Holiday Road. Is that something y'all can have next meeting? Can you, you and Tim? Have it ready for us next meeting, cause those people do need to be out of that dust. You still gonna get potholes, ladies, but you won't be getting all that dust and that mud, because that DBST is a small surface that do exactly what y'all asked and get you out of mud and the dust. And as time goes on, more people move in, you back, you end up getting the, the black asphalt. But now, the main thing is getting you out of that dust. So I don't think we need a motion on it, just bring us that estimate next meeting, can you, you and Tim. And thank y'all for coming. Stay in touch with us. If, if you feel like coming back next week, you can come back. It'll be at five o'clock next meeting. But if you don't, just tune in this on, on our website, and you'll see what the cost would be to do those three roads. It is though only three roads up in there, right? Holiday, Harper and Williamson.
Hold on, what, what my first thought was moving back, is when you come down the half, I'm talking country now, when you come down where Bebe used to stay, come down that hill, the rest of that they road going, if, if, if you didn't wear the sewer down that hill, they, 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 that they road going to the, to the right when you come down that hill, you'll see they all watered down that hill.
Okay. All right.
I don't know if they address in Williamson Road, or it probably is Williamson Road, the extension or something.
All right, thank y'all for coming.
Okay, next.
Mr. President, next on the agenda is Mary Catherine Decker.
Good morning. My name is Mary Catherine Decker. I'm a small business owner and local artist, and I'm here today to discuss with you the purchase of the government-owned Madison Main Street building. I have exciting plans to enrich this building that would add to historic Madison. I'm so grateful to have grown up in Madison. I was a student in the Madison County Public Schools, participated in Madison County Summer Arts Camp, and was even in Madison, the city junior ambassador. I want to give back to the community of Madison because I love the people here, and I want to do everything I can to help Madison grow. My plans for the building would be to make this an art gallery. This has several benefits for our community. I would add sustainable culture to the area. I would host art classes for citizens, children and adults. And I would also have my family, which is full of very talented artists, also host art classes as well, exposing the citizens to the skill of painting. Many thriving downtowns have art galleries. For example, Oxford, the Oxford Square has South Side Gallery, the Tupelo Downtown area has the Carrion Gallery, and I think this would add so much value to Madison. A ground floor retail space to attract citizens in this area is really important. Like Oxford has modeled and Tupelo, the ground level floor should be retail spaces and restaurants, because that attracts people to come and enjoy the area. I think that the, in other cities, they've modeled attorney offices and accounting, accounting offices on the second level floor. There also, there also should be a diversity and ownership of historic Madison. There's been a trend for several developers to buy multiple property, properties in the Main Street, especially since Madison, the city, has announced plans to invest in historic Madison. The developer-leaseer type ownership has several negative effects on the area. Leasers historically raise rents as time goes on by increasing the overhead of small businesses, and it makes it harder for them to survive long term. As a small business-owned property, this would give the art gallery the best chance of survival. For example, the Pick and Paul family has owned Pick and Paul Pottery in downtown Madison for over forty-five years. This pottery studio has added so much culture and value to Madison, and I wonder, would this family still be a successful business all these years if they weren't the ones who are the owner-operators of this building? Also, leasers typically do not invest in property improvements more than the minimal required amount to pass safety inspections. Their goal is to turn a profit, profit from rents. As a small business operated and owned building, I would invest in the aesthetics of the building and draw community members to the shop. It is the sense of pride and ownership that has given this area charm. My husband, John Decker, has been a contractor for over thirteen years. He has experience in restoring historical buildings and reviving them. So we plan to improve the building together and restore its historical value. And lastly, I would be more than happy to let the Junior Auxiliary of Madison County's Crown Club continue to have their eight annual meetings a year in my building, free of charge. So in closing, I'm the perfect person to buy the Main Street building. I love Madison County, I've grown up here. I will continue to create culture for this community, I will hold art classes for children and adults. I will add culture with a beautiful art gallery that is open to the public, and I will be able to improve the building long term and have a successful business because I'm the owner-operator. Thank you, everyone, and I look forward to working with you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mike, I think that's something that you're gonna have to, yeah.
Yes, I thought you'd check it up for this period project. Title number eighty-three, so.
Okay.
You are waiting now, call me now.
Well, we may as well do it now while she's here. You can go ahead, let's do eighty-three.
All right. Not that long.
Good morning, everybody. Okay, so, this is the Main Street building on City of Madison. You know, this has been contentious, a little controversial, because the City of Madison says that they own the building, and that county doesn't own the building. Well, you, by way of reminder, this board asked me to look into it about a month ago or more, I did, and I reported to you that my research suggests that the county owns the building. County's always own the building since it was deeded to the county by former mayor. And that, there's no lease in the record from the county leasing this to the Junior Auxiliary. And then we went to look at it, and there was some issue, there were some issues. So then after that, I told you just back me up, I would rather, I would like this board to allow me to hire an expert title lawyer, and you agreed to that. So I hired Kamisha Mumford, who used to work for Alda Johnston in the Chancellor's office, who wrote the title handbook for Madison County. I implored her to look at this, to back me up, to see if I'd made any mistakes. And so I've got a fifty-three, sixty-three page title opinion that I'd like to enter to the record that says the county, Madison County owns this building. There's no doubt about it in my mind. And so I have a certificate of title certified that the county owns the building, that I'd like to enter to the record. Now, there are a couple things you can do. You could ignore this and continue like it is with the city maintaining that they own the building. Maybe they could negotiate with her directly, but city doesn't own the building. Number two, now that you know, if you follow this certificate of title on your council's recommendation, you could maybe at this point, allow me to go to the city attorney and inform her that, of this certificate of title, that will be in the record once the minutes are approved, and see if they would relent. Thirdly, we'd have to take an approach which would end this forever, and that would be to finally quiet title action in Madison County Chancery Court system, and let the Chancery Judge review everything, their contention, our contention, this certificate of title, or whatever the city wants to put up, to say that, say that we own it. The title attorney did send to me a memo about actions, which I'm not gonna put in the minutes, because it's a privileged client-lawyer communication. We did hire her, we're her client. And so if there's any for you actions, for anybody who might be hearing what I'm saying now, we're not gonna release that by my recommendation. But it, there, there are other items certified even more that we own this building. So you, you can do what you want to do, you might want to take her, you know, if, if you own the building, you still have to go by procurement, bidding, I just can't do it if you own the building, and I'm saying you own the building. So I, I'm thinking you have to wait a little while before you act on this, because if they, if they move today to honor your request, you'd have a world of trouble, okay? So I think, I think that, I think that we should proceed as a county, believing, as your lawyers telling you that you own the building, and then maybe get it confirmed by a Chancery Judge, or let me do what I can do, whatever that might be, to forestall that legal action. I don't know that that's gonna work. I think it's very likely that we're gonna have to go to Chancery Court for quiet title action, so that a judge confirms this forever. But that's up to you to, to direct me as to what to do. But I would like this title opinion to be put into the record.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion to put the title search report into the records.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. President, I also would like to make a motion for our attorney to go to the Chancery Judge.
Chancery Court.
Chancery Court.
Chancery Court.
Court to confirm and, or to move forward to confirm that the county owns the property.
Okay.
Okay, is there a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And in that way, it's just whatever the board supervisor decide to do with that piece of property is clear.
Yes.
And whoever purchased it, they know they have a good title.
Be a while. All right.
Okay, next.
So in response to Ms. Decker, Mr. President, if she, at this point, we will move forward with quiet title action. Subsequent to that, the board would have to advertise for this property to be purchased by someone outside of the county, and you'll have to watch the newspaper for that advertisement to show up in the newspaper.
If, if the board decides to sell.
That is, that's correct.
That's the, thank you. Okay.
Okay, the next person on the agenda, I'm sorry, the next person signed up is Bernice Caldwell. Bernice Caldwell.
Good morning.
Morning, Ms. Caldwell.
My name is Bernice Caldwell, and I'm here to try to get a guest house next to me so that my kid can be around. I don't want to be the person that's found dead in a house for a week. I want, they're there on that property in a guest house or a trailer, they're checking on their mom every day. So the, the thing is that they say it's about the waste products, the wastewater. Nobody wants wastewater on their land, so they were saying that I needed to go a hundred yards back, I mean, that's somebody else's property, and a hundred yards forward is somebody else's property, it's across the road where I live. So I'm saying that to me, it's enough land in there to run that water line and use the same septic tank that, so the kid could be there. I, I want my kid next to me, I don't want him living with me. You know, children are really bad these days, but I'm just being honest. I want you there to take care of me, because I got medical issues, and I get sick quite often. But I don't want you in my house trying to rule me. I'm too old for that. So if you all can see where that can go, I would appreciate it to have my child next door to me, not causing any problem on anybody else's land. I want it on my own property.
I think, Ms. Caldwell, let me, Scott Weeks is our zoning person, and let, let him explain to us and you exactly what the issues are, how we can try to get this done for you, if it can, if it can be done.
I hope he can.
Okay, he's right behind you, let him, let him come to the mic and, and listen to, to what we got here.
Good morning, Mr. President, Board of Supervisors. Ms. Caldwell, the issue with this property is it is one acre of land. It is zoned in the A1 Agricultural District, but the issue is there is already a residential structure on this property. And I know our zoning ordinance says you can have down to one acre if the Health Department will approve it. The, the issue is there's already a residence on this property. But it, it would entirely be up to the Board of Supervisors to see if this could be built on, if the sewer could be dealt with through the Health Department, and it is also in Bear Creek certificated area. I do not know of the availability of sewer on this property, or if they do have it, but that would be much better if they did. But it would entirely be a Health Department issue, and, and a board issue if you would want that to be there for a medical hardship, so to speak.
Well, so she's asked for a temporary trailer or some building to be placed there where her child, child can, can stay there and kind of look out for her something. And it would be done, if we would permit it, it will be done on temporary use. But it can only be done if the Health Department approves the, the sewer system.
Yes.
Now, if Bear Creek runs sewer in the area, and everybody got the septic tank getting on public sewer, then it would be a lot easier. So I think the, you know, I don't, I, I'd like to make a motion that would allow her an opportunity to move forward towards seeing if she could solve the sewer issue. And that would be taking, uh, being able to, uh, do a temporary, um, mobile home on her land. But first, it must be approved by the Health Department. And back to, for, to, to you, Scott, where you would know, uh, that she, it's been approved.
Yeah.
So she can be issued a certificate of occupancy. Okay? That would be my motion.
I'll second the motion to make sure I clearly understand what you're, what you're actually saying is give her the go-ahead from the Board of Supervisors, but first she's going to have to go with the Health Department to get it clear with any issues there, and then come back to Scott, and Scott would approve it, and she'd move on down the road.
Exactly. That's exactly what the motion was.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I, I support your motion, but I don't like it.
Go ahead.
It, I see it causing problems for me in my district. Uh, if, if we prove a motion like this, we talk about one acre, a house already sitting on it, and now you want to put another one on there. I don't like it, but I go along with it.
Scott, in our zoning, does it require two acres?
It requires two acres in the A1 district, R1 district, but in the A1 district, it does allow you to go down to one acre.
Goes down to one acre?
Yes.
And this is in the R1?
It's in A1.
A1.
It's one acre, one dwelling.
One acre, one dwelling.
Okay. Yeah, that could cause a, could cause a problem just throughout the county, actually. Are there not any other acreage there?
I couldn't have a map, but I do not.
She doesn't own any other acreage.
She doesn't?
It's not much.
She, she owns one acre.
There's one acre there.
I guess you hated it on the, on the, uh, Health Department, Health Department.
Basically.
So that's why I just said I didn't like it, but I go along with it because, uh, we gonna let the Health Department make the call.
And I, and to be honest with you, I've, um, it, you know, I've, I've been knowing Ms. Caldwell for quite some time, so I'm trying to be of help. But, uh, the Health Department, yeah, the Health Department, I think, have already made the call. Yeah. But this board is, is not willing to stand in her way, but the Health Department and, and the facts stand in her way.
I, I think the Lynx Apartments are directly across the road from this area, and I do not know about their sewer system, but I'm sure there's some close by. Now, whether it runs right there at Cloverleaf, I have no idea.
That, where the Lynx are, that sewer, that sewer comes down Old Jackson Road on the other side of the interstate away from Clover. So, and, and I don't know what the intentions would be for Bear Creek, but that's the, you know, I think because that's Bear Creek certificated area, she have, would have to talk to them first, uh, because the, or the Health Department is going to talk to them about putting septic in their certificated area.
Well, I will be happy to reach out to Bear Creek, uh, for Ms. Caldwell on that issue, at least with the, you know, their availability and seeing if they could, what they could do there.
Okay, well, I tell you what. I mean, we, we've got a lot of confusion, but, but at the same time, um, we see the board is not the issue. Let's table the motion until you do some further investigation from, and, and, and instead of, uh, uh, us making, you know, voting in any kind of way right now, and let's find out if we can get her the sewer situation satisfied or not.
And also with the zoning as well.
I think the zoning is...
It's a zoning, correct?
The zoning they want, it is correct. Yes, sir.
She has got to get, you know, a sewer, a sewer situation satisfied.
Okay. So you want to table this?
I want to table it and, and let Scott work with Ms. Caldwell to try to see if he could help and see if, if Bear, because I thought Bear Creek was coming, bringing sewer up that way anyway. So let's, let's see where they are.
Yes, sir.
Okay then. Okay, Ms. Caldwell, we're gonna work with you and try to see what we can do to help. Okay.
Right.
Yes, sir.
So we pull that motion?
Yeah. We just table it. Okay. Who we have next?
Yes, sir. Rosa Wilson and Mary Beth McDonald have signed up to...
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Rosa Wilson, and this is Mary Beth McDonald. I've been in board meetings before. Paul Griffin is my supervisor. Carl Banks is my ex-supervisor and knows my family well. Our concerns here today is basically only about Twelve Oaks Road in North Oak Canton because of the lack of attention we're getting in having our roads repaired. Over the last month and a half, I've talked to several people in here, Mr. Baker, Paul Banks, Carl, uh, Carl and, uh, Mr. Griffin. And our concern is that on Twelve Oaks Road, we have no lines on either side of our roads. There are no ditches anymore because of the debris that's been cut over a period of time. I've been in Mississippi now for, since 2010. I haven't had a ditch since I've been here. The culverts are smaller than they should be with the debris that's being kept, not being removed from our area. It's clogging up our drains. So we have this massive overflow, and you know, in Madison County, we have this major downpour of rain all of a sudden. So our, our roads flood out. So that's one of our major issues is that we have no ditches. We have called and asked for this, these items to be done, and it has not been done. Fortunately, Mr. Baker did send a guy out with a little machine to, I guess, dig a ditch. He stayed there about five or 10 minutes and he left, never had any more contact with me. And I'm one of those people on that street that walks up and down that street. I take inventory of what's going on. When we go toward Denberry Plant, we have this major drop-off where there is a creek that runs under the road. The road has been damaged by the heavy trucks. So therefore, on each side of that road, you've got broken asphalt. So there's no guard rail, so we have problems there. Go down that street at night, there are people that live on the end of that street. What happens when they hit a bump in the road or something? They're off in that creek and nobody knows they're off in that creek. We have people on our area that has, uh, that don't live on the road. There's a, um, white, um, cement building at the beginning of our, uh, area in between, um, Mr. Simon and the Hardings that the guy used to come out and cut it, now he doesn't cut it anymore. So we have this overgrowth. Our easements are overgrown most of the time. They come out with the big equipment that's really too big for the area. What about some zero turns or stag or gr- gravely to come out and cut that? And we'd eat our ditches and stuff when we do have them, because Mary Beth lives where the easement is really high. So that property could use just as good zero turn to cut that grass on a regular basis. It's far too in between of having the road serviced. All of our, uh, roads, that whole road is a mess, and I think Mary Beth can agree with that. We have people that... out and clean the ditches out with the, um, rescue barn that's right next door to me. So we're just asking for a little attention on our road. Paving our road, uh, not paving it, but basically giving us our white lines back, our line down the middle. When you're traveling south on North Oak Canton, going toward John Arthur Eze House, we have blue reflectors in our, in our road, and we're not sure why they're there. Is that something that the county has done? You know, it's, it's probably about five or six of them or something. They're blue reflectors on each side of the road. They're strategically placed, but there are no, um, there are no lines on the side of the roads once you leave Meadow Hill subdivision. Then there's a tenant that lives in Meadow Hill that has, his, his property backs up to our road. There is a man-made, um, pond. Sesspool. It has been green since my child is 26 years old. That cesspool has been there forever. We tried calling the Health Department, nobody seems to know what to do. I talked to, uh, when Lawrence was our road manager, I talked to Lawrence about it. We just need some answers as to who takes care of what. When I talked to Mr. Griffin and to Carl Banks, we were told that the boundaries that the county takes care of have been changed. We were told that, that two years ago, the, uh, boundaries from the, um, our property line to the asphalt had changed, that you all don't take care of that anymore. And I'm like, okay, so when did that happen? And I was told this about Mr. Baker, that that had changed and that, um, they don't take care of the property line to the asphalt anymore. And I said, he said it was only from the culvert to the asphalt. And I'm like, come on, y'all. If these things are changing, we, the residents, the taxpayers, need to know that there are changes coming about in our neighborhood, and we deserve the same rights and privileges as Deerfield, Har- Harvey Crossing, you've got this massive, uh, thing going on on Yandle Road with new homes and everything. We're still a part of this neighborhood, and we want the same rights and privileges that anybody else wants. Am I missing anything? I'm just trying to figure out who's right and who's wrong and what is going to happen, and how long does it take to get something done? I know the rain keeps us from getting a lot of things done, but at least show us in good faith that you're trying.
Let me, uh, step in right and, and see if I can get some help in finding out something too. One, I'm going to ask the engineer, Tim, if he'd come up, um, I guess I'm interested in knowing about these reflectors, and I think they ain't here yet.
Kind of spooky, okay?
What are the blue reflectors, Tim?
I'm sorry.
Blue reflect... The blue reflectors are actually not spooky. They're, they're what you want to see. They mark the fire hydrants. So when the fire department comes in the middle of the night, they, they see that blue reflector, they know a fire hydrant's within that area. Yep.
All right. All right.
That's what they are. And they're typically in the middle of the lane compared to, you know, the, the shoulders or the, uh, middle of the road.
So what happens when we have a fire hydrant on a private road? How is it, how, how do they know to turn up in that road for that? Because we don't have a reflector on Twelve Oaks in front of Walking Horse Lane.
That I can't answer. The county... For those areas that put them out.
I would, I would definitely drop by and see them.
Now, the next issue, I, uh, I guess I meet Cornelius. Because we'd like to talk about the, the, the cutting the grass and the ditching and, and those other things. She brought up about the road is, uh, have we got anything planned?
Uh, Board of Supervisors, what we did, we went down, I met with Ms. Wilson down there, and she was talking about the pine either side of the road, so I got the broom down there, swept all that off. And she talking about, uh, patch the grass, because I asked Tim to give me the boundary where we had on that road, I'm a driver, and well, I cried to her, we can't go beyond our boundary, they do no work on the road. And so I had Tim, she complained about, uh, little patch of grass right next to the fence, the horse farm there. And so like I thought, I said, if it's our, we'll cut what's out. But we're full, and she talking about the zero turn, the road is not in condition. The road is in great condition, it's better than a lot of road, we got a whole mouse account.
Not that it's not, the road is not in condition, we don't have any markings, no white lines. When we, when we're driving on that road, we live on the road. When we're driving on that road and it's excessive rain there, you can't tell where you're driving on that road when it's excessive rain. Okay? You got to stay basically in the middle. You don't ever know if somebody's walking that road at night or evening time or whatever when it's raining. You don't know that. So I'm not trying to be, Mr. Baker, I promise you, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but I live on the road. We live on the road. We, we're just concerned that we don't have what we need.
Another striping, um, we, we have, we have quite a few roads that don't have striping. And, um, that's just...
The norm, that's okay.
Yeah. We, we have quite a few roads that have striping. I, I ride on several roads, uh, came at my house, you know, in back end, no striping. That's something that we have to take a look at if, if we're gonna go out and start and see what the cost would be to do a striping program for a lot of our roads that we have in Madison County. And I think we have miles and miles and miles of roads without striping. I understand that you, you just want to make, and we don't have any zero turns. You know? Now, because, uh, the, the county... The county is a, we, we used to cut, cutting country roads, and we cutting weeds, and we have tractors, and they go out and cut weeds.
But they have to.
But we don't, we don't do zero turns, and we're not manicuring the sides like a lawn. We cutting, we trying to keep the grass down low enough to where it, it, and keep things away from, away from the road so you can drive safely, but we don't have zero turn. Uh, in some areas, I see people, uh, I, I know some people, when they cutting, they cutting their lawn, they, they cut the ditch and they cut the roadway in front of them. And if, and if everybody, or all the neighbors do that, then you end up with a well-manicured road. But that's neighbors taking care of their road also.
I'm fine with that. If we know what the boundaries are, because I've been there long enough to know that in past history, the county has cut, especially the easement in front of my parents' property, which was where Mary, Mary Beth lives. So I know that the county has done that in the past. So if it is not the responsibility of the county to do that anymore, let us know that. You know, because that means she has to pay her lawn people to come in and cut that property. And that's a lot of grass, and we have had where it has been not just small, but way as tall as we are. There have been times that it has been really overgrown. So that's what we're trying to figure out is the responsibility. And I remember, um, when I talked to Lawrence, Lawrence went down to the area that faces Denberry, where that, uh, area is that, that, um, is the road, yeah, is washed out and the road is broken, trying to do some work down there. And the Denberry people stopped him from doing it because they said that there was a pipeline or something under that particular area that it could blow up the whole area. They were supposed to come back and flag all of that, and they have not done that to this day. So I'm just trying to figure out, you know, what is, what's the procedure? If we're not supposed to come in here and, and, and voice our feelings or whatever, we just need to know. You know, if, if nothing's going to be done by it, then we just want to know that what can be done and what can't be done. That's all I'm saying.
Well, I mean, you, you're voicing.
I, I know, and we're, we're brave.
You know you have the right to come in and voice. If you didn't, we would have had the sheriff escort you out. You know, the, the, um, I know, this, I think it's, it's Paul, it's your district.
You're doing a great job.
But, uh, I had it so long, I, I, you know, I, I know, I, I, I remember this area. The thing is, uh, we're going to be talking to our engineer, our road ma- road manager, and, and, and we'll take a look and see what can we do that we're not doing.
Okay.
And that's, and, and you can call me or Paul, either one of us, because if you call Paul, call me, I'm going to call Paul. But still, we, we, we're interested in making sure that our citizens are, are taken care of.
Thank you.
If you just give us a chance, you came in and you let us know the, the list of things you want them to take a look at, and we'll say, go take a look at it, and we'll take a look at it, see what we can do to help you.
Appreciate it.
Okay then.
I want to say this before you leave, Cornelius. I happened to be, was down there a couple of weeks ago. I don't know how I ended up down there, but I ended up down there. That lot that's back there, almost at the back, that someone used to have horses maybe look like, and they're not cutting. You need to call Scott Weeks.
Scott?
Scott Weeks.
Williams?
Weeks, Weeks.
Scott Weeks, okay.
And down there where that cross drain go across? Look at it, if it look unsafe, and I know it needs some signage there where people won't run off on the air in there. So that's something you can take care pretty quick. And where, and if it's chipping off bad and it... And where, and if it's chipping off bad and need fixing, we might need to do something pretty quick. The ditches, just truthfully, they look like a country road that I live on. And I lived on the country road all my life. So if you can dig the ditches out and help them a little, dig them out. But soon as they, soon as you get the rain, they gonna fill up again.
I know, but you know, my, my concern is that the fact that water can't even get through the coverts because of what's in the ditch. And like I said, I don't have a problem cleaning it out, because I don't know, Mr. Banks, if you've been out there since my dad died in '07. But my father's property looks a whole lot different. And I think when you were out there about five years ago, six years ago, Mr. Griffin, you can attest to the property is a whole lot different than what it used to serve. Hard work is not my problem, so I don't have a problem doing the work. I just need to know if that's my responsibility.
Mr. President, where is Lawrence? Didn't we hire him to, to take care of drainage?
Well.
I mean, is it more to it than his or?
Yes, sir, and it's like you said, the, the rain has slowed us down, and he's got one crew. And so we, we go to one place, you know, one right after another, and they're, they backed up. So we're a little behind, but, you know, he, he is actively working on drainage. And the, the time you were talking about Lawrence, that was recent, wasn't it? Okay, right.
We landed on the stuff.
Right, yeah, Lawrence did go out there to do some stuff, and Denbury did shut him down. So they're, they're working through getting a representative from Denbury to be on site when Lawrence goes back, and it's just a coordination issue at the moment.
It is a pipeline under that.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, well, no, don't put that sign up there either.
It's not a sign.
Well, the reason I say that is because it, it seems that every board meeting, we have someone or someones that is here talking about drainage.
It's an ongoing problem.
If we could catch ahead of time, you know, then we could solve the problem instead of trying to solve it here, you know, in the board, in the board meeting. I mean, if we could solve it before, ahead of time, it, it would be great.
Sure.
So it'd save, it'd save, you know, anyone, you know, coming in and, you know, talking about it, even though we want y'all to come and talk about it. But it just seem like every board meeting, there's a drainage issue, and we send somebody out there, and hopefully it gets taken care of. But if we could catch it ahead of time, it, it would be great if we could.
Right, we'll try our best to do so.
I, I know you will, thank you, though.
And we appreciate you all's time, and like I say, Mary Beth has one other thing she wants.
I just wanted to reiterate about the striping on the road. Our asphalt drops directly off into the ditches. We don't have an easement past that that would catch a tire. If you're not on that asphalt, you're in the ditch. So that's why we desperately need at least markings on the white sides.
You talking about going south now, right?
I'm talking about twelve, twelve, both sides. I mean, it drops off like, here's the road, and here's the ditch. The asphalt stops right there, and there's a ditch. There's no easement, there's not even a foot of dirt catch a tire.
No shoulder to the road.
Yeah, no shoulder.
Okay, okay, well, we have to look at that and, and see about trying to, that's a safety issue there, there's no shoulder. And we'll ask our engineer to go take a look and see what we can do in terms of striping for that particular road in that area, okay?
And when you all meet with Denbury, ask him to ask their people not to throw their trash out of their windows into our area.
You right on that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Next on the agenda is Marcus Porter, I'm sorry, Marcus Proctor and Linda Proctor.
Okay.
Good morning, everyone. Happy Monday. So we're here to make the case of why we need to repave Cawthon Road.
What road?
Cawthon.
Cawthon, okay.
Yes, if you're familiar with Cawthon Road, it's a hot mess, right? It's, it's in really bad shape. To give you guys some perspective, is I was in the road yesterday, and this was after the rain, so it was worse. It took 10 minutes to go one mile, and it's gotten worse. It's no surprise to me how it actually got here. So to give you guys really some perspective, is the road was paved probably, what, 15, 20 years ago? It was a very light pavement, just to make sure it was no longer a dirt road. And that was fine initially. What has happened over the past, first of all, there's been a lot of traffic. There is a big hunting club close by, there's an eight mile lake up the road, and they're holding logs from every direction you can imagine. So with the road that's already paved very thin, it's gotten progressively worse, right? So what I wanna do is, and I'm not sure what the process is, but we wanna get a sense of how do we begin to build a case as far as how do we do this, number one? Because we know obviously there are resources involved. I'm familiar with allocating resources, so whatever we need to do to help build the case, fine, we want to do it. That's the first thing. The second thing is, is there's been crews that's been out recently to look at it and fix the road. However, the job they're done leaves a little bit to be desired, right? So literally, it's a case where if there's a hole here, they feel just the hole here and the hole next to it that's gonna be a problem next week is not being addressed. So we feel like there is the immediate opportunity from an actually just servicing standpoint to make sure the road is in better shape, so we don't have to deal with what we're dealing with now. And the third thing is, hopefully, this road is already on some list to be repaved at some point. We would love to get a little bit of clarity as far as where's that process look like? How do you prioritize which roads gets which? Because I'm familiar with Madison County, I live in Gloucestak, roads are in pretty good shape. So I'm curious to know, like, is it based on traffic? Is it based on need? Is it a combination of both? So we can help kind of build a case to make sure we're not here every other week going forward. So what did I miss this?
The huge potholes, okay. On one side of the road, okay, the space is too narrow for a, for to put a car, a tire here and a tire here. You have a lake over here, you have a pond over here. And so I'm going, I'm driving to my parents' house. I am trying to straddle, I hit this hole so hard, the bottom of my car, I thought I had just tore the whole bottom up. And that's just truly unacceptable. The road is getting worse, okay, I was, they have put asphalt or whatever in the, in the hole. I went shortly after. The only thing that packed the asphalt in the hole was a car had ran through it. That's it. No packing. First rain, face water, it's all gone, same condition.
Thank y'all for coming. I think you was the one that spoke on the phone?
Yes, correct.
And we have seven champs also.
Okay.
So all of us, yes.
I hope Mr. Proctor is doing good.
He's getting better, thank you for asking, yes.
Cawthon Road.
Yeah.
A long, wide road. Though later than here, earlier was what I was telling about the DBST, that we did a big DBSP project years ago. Cawthon Road was one of, and it was done basically to get people out of the dust and the mud. And there have been time, some past, a lot of traffic, buses.
Log trucks. Yeah.
I'm gonna get to that.
Yep.
Log trucks are still serious, serious problem. I think I shared with you on the, on the phone, if we pave it this summer, log truck gonna tear it up next summer. But the main problem is Cawthon Road being so long, so wide, it gonna take so much revenue to fix Cawthon Road. And if I go in there and fix a mile of it, my constituents that stay on that mile, that other, that other eight miles of it gonna wear me out while they didn't fix the whole road. So the problem is find enough money to fix that whole road at one time. Go ahead.
I have a question, okay. Now, from my experience, the log trucks come out right in front of my dad's house of various roads up in there, okay? So I'm not really sure of how the road is past my parents' house. It cannot be in the condition that is, it's probably regular, but it's just not just totally messed up. Like that part between 43 and 352 across the road, okay? Then secondly, if log trucks are gonna be allowed to travel back and forth freely, then why do this TST stuff and just do a paved concrete whatever road? So there's not one that when the trucks come through.
We'll have to raise your taxes to do that.
Well, we paying them high anyway, so what's the difference? At least now we can justify paying them.
Uh, uh, DBST is a whole lot cheaper than that asphalt. And plus, they gonna tear that up also. We're, uh, law is gonna tear that up also. Country county roads is not built to hold a log truck, but we have to allow them to go. And we can't charge them additional taxes, state law don't let us do that. The answer you, you come for is, I don't have it for you. Because we don't have, I don't see the revenue coming anytime soon to do all Cawthon Road. But once again, I think the road manager just hear you that though potholes that been patched and one being left, I don't think it gonna happen anymore. Because he hear you right now, they gonna make sure that they patch all the holes.
May I make a recommendation as well? So how about a phased approach? So using the log trucks as an example, timber on the road so quickly. And they've literally now cut everything in the area, where for the next five or 10 years, we're good, because there's nothing else to really log, right? So if you look at most of the traffic, it's the first mile and a half of Cawthon Road. That's the majority of it. The other piece, there's traffic way up past where the jobs live, you know that area, but that's a good 15, 20 miles upward. But the majority of the traffic, the hunting clubs, the eight mile lake is the first part of the area. Have you guys entertained doing a phased approach, right? So literally, phase one would be the first several miles. I've seen it done in other areas, other projects, it's not unique, right? Because we know that's where most of the heavy lifting is coming from. Because there are other people also that live over Cawthon Road and Camden Road who's using that road as well. So I agree, we can't stop the log trucks. We were damn as well. We can't stop the log trucks, but we know logs only grow at such a rate. And now there's a mad rush to cut every bush that's in sight, but that's not going to be long term. Because I think to my standpoint, educate me on this, log trucks aside, to your point when the road was built, it was built as a short-term solution.
Yes.
So I'm just asking, we revisit what was already something that we know we needed to revisit regardless, right? How about just simply move that up?
You are, and, and I have gave the, uh, doing a portion of it at a time, some thought, and, and still giving, giving it some thought. But right now, we working on road plan that's already in place. So when a road plan, the new road plan comes up, that thought gonna be on my heart and mind strongly, do we want to do a section of that road? And I hope my colleagues work with me on that. But the jobs and everybody else up there past that mile, no, my phone gonna ring while we didn't do the whole road. So that's why I'm having that, that thought complex, do we wanna just do portion of it or try to wait until we can do the whole road?
And, and it would have helped you, I would easily get the jobs in here for your next meeting to be able to testify that they would be okay with this? Because trust me, we've had that dialogue with them, and we know that that last mile is the worst part of it. So again, we know, I mean, this is a money play, right? We all know there is a finite amount of resources that we have to spend. Totally get that piece. And even giving us clarity in what the long-term plan looks like helps us. So if you were to say, for an example, 12 to 18 months, this is something that we've been looking at budgeting for, now we at least know where we are in the process? But when we're going in blind with no clarity or no direction, that becomes the troubling part for us. I think it's reasonable.
Yeah.
Secondly, how many people have to live on the road or in the area before it become a, a, a part of the, or a priority or whatever?
Well, there, there's no certain number of people. But the amount of people should help, definitely help. But we're not a certain number that this board goes by.
Okay, but we was told there was a number that, I mean, not enough people live on the road, but the number that live on the road and travel the road is totally different.
Yeah, that's exactly what you said.
Yeah, so the road is still being utilized in a major way.
We gonna work on it.
So for the sake of time, Ryan, I know we're taking up too much of yours, all right? So from a next step perspective, what do you guys recommend? Do we need to come back here every couple of weeks to get insight into what next looks like? I mean, give, give us some direction.
I'll give, I'll give you, I'll give you some, talk with your supervisor.
Okay.
Just talk with your supervisor outside of this meeting.
Okay.
And, and we support, we have a budget on roads and streets. Every year, we have a budget, every supervisor has, you know, a budget of monies. And that supervisor, you know, works with his constituents on, on the roads. So the best thing to do is talk with your supervisor.
Okay, okay.
You know, because we're gonna support what that supervisor would like to do in, in that district.
Okay, very good.
And like I said, I didn't get you doing portion of it, some serious thought.
Yeah.
And gonna have some more thought of when it come time to make that, uh, uh, new road plan.
Okay.
And this, this your sister raised?
It's my sister, correct.
Slow down. You were raised up here, so slow down.
No, 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 no. It wasn't like that when I was raised up, when I was up there. It was dirt, but it was small. I went up and dodged and I hung way up there.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. President, Tawana Giles is next.
Good morning. Tawana Foster here, I'm, I'm here on behalf of Cawthon and Camden Road. I live right on the corner, the intersection of Cawthon and Camden. And as my neighbors say, the road is in a mess. Now, I will call and get a work, to get a work order done, to be done. I understand that the holes cannot be patched when it's raining, I understand that. So the last time I called, I mean, it was just in a mess. They waited until it rained, I mean, it poured down rain, and the holes were full of water. They came and put that, I guess, asphalt, whatever that stuff is, they pack it with, with one man and a shovel. They put it in, in the hole. And when the vehicles go through it, it just mashed it down in the mud, and you got these, this. This what you got, you got bumps and raises. And when I talked to the lady at the office, she said, she said, well, we can't fix the holes when it's wet, when it's raining. I said, I understand that, but my thing is, why did they send a crew up there to really mess it up? Because it, all it did was pushed it down in the mud, and you still got all this red mud and all this red dirt. And to reiterate what they said, they would patch, there are two holes here, both of them can be fixed. They'll patch one and leave another one. I don't understand that. And you know, I took a lot of pictures, and there's a place right after you cross that bridge coming, headed north, has been there for months. And why do they overlook that? I don't understand it.